We will get the Busiris City Joint Railers Committee meetings going here for Thursday, December 5th at 6:00 PM. Members present are Andrew Schock, Bruce Truka, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wirebaugh, and myself. I will call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Up first, we have public participation, and it looks like we have Kevin DeTray here from the airport. Step up to the mic and podium and name and address what you've got for us, Kevin.
Thank you.
Everybody knows Kevin, right? Okay? Kevin DeTray, sorry, Rock Race Airport.
Okay. Thank you so much, and thank you for inviting me here tonight. First of all, I have some handouts. Okay. Everybody have a copy? All right. Basically, the Service Director asked me to come up and kind of explain annually, we there's FAA grants available. Every airport in the system is given $150,000 a year to apply towards grants for the airport. Once again, I may be re-plowing no ground here, but it's these projects are 90% federally funded, 5% state-funded, and 5% local-funded. So, meeting with the Airport Commission, coming up with some ideas for and needs for fiscal year 2020, and you have this, your pre-app there, I believe, in front of you. Number one is a rotating beacon. The present rotating beacon that we have is old, it's tired, it breaks down consistently. We have to have Eric Clady come out and constantly work on it. So, we would want to upgrade the rotating beacon now. In meeting with our project manager from the FAA, he also said, as opposed to putting it out for bids, we could call three different manufacturers and purchase directly from them, and Eric, our maintenance man, could possibly then, and I talked to Eric about it, could install it himself, and there's a potential to save some money that way by going through that process. So, I know I called Monerco over at Mansfield, they're a major manufacturer of these lighting products. It's about $4,400 bucks for one of the units. We would have to pay that, but then we would get 90% refunded from the FAA, and then 5% refunded from the state of Ohio. So, looking at different options, and we're winging probably towards going that way because it'll save everybody some money. Number two, obstruction removal runway 2-2 approach. This is a big item. It's on the second page of those handouts that you have. What you have in front of you there is called an instrument approach procedure, and these are what we use when we're coming in, if the weather is bad, poor visibility, low ceilings, especially at night, and so forth. What you see there are the procedures that are used, regardless of whether it's a small aircraft or an airliner, these are the type of procedures that are used. If you look up at the top, it's there's some remarks there, and it says "Procedure not applicable at night." And the reason for that is Isaac Beale Road, and the road itself is not an obstruction, but they consider trucks going down the road, the FAA does, as an obstruction. And they consider 15 feet, and this encroaches in our 20-to-1 approach area there, so we're not allowed to shoot this approach at night, and it's very, very critical. You may ask, well, why don't you land on the other direction? It's all wind-oriented. You take off and land into the wind. So, if the winds are strong out of the south, you don't want to land to the north on that runway because you're landing with the tailwind, and that's counterproductive. So, what the FAA solution to this was, and I don't necessarily agree, is to put a light on a 15-foot pole, and it can be solar-powered, dual LED light, on Isaac Beale Road, adjacent to the fence there, to mark that obstruction. We'd have a double red light at night. Now, in my mind, we're putting in obstruction where there's currently not an obstruction, but this, you know, it's their money, we've got to play by their rules. So, what we'd be looking at it doing is putting, you know, a pole up, probably something that's frangible, where if a wing of an aircraft or something were to hit it, it would more likely do damage to the pole as opposed to the aircraft, and could put double lights on solar-powered LED. So, that is the FAA solution, so we can get that approach procedure back at night. I just said it, it's very crucial, it's very important that we have that. Any questions on that? All right. Got that A J app to put these on. Number three, runway 4-2-2 crack seal. September 17, we did a complete mill and overlay of the asphalt runway, which was funded in part by local funds, in part by funds that hoard, had donated, in land reimbursement, state funds, and federal funds. We're starting to get some small cracks on the runway, not major, but, you know, time to take care of them before they become large cracks. So, we're figuring, I'm sorry, and on the right hand of those, the columns there, those numbers, would be the city's local, our matching share. So, we're looking at about $5,000. To do the crack seal, city's share would be $250. Item number four, taxiway Charlie, which is a parallel taxiway, a partial parallel taxiway adjacent to the runway. It's been at least 20 years since that was put in, I forget the exact date, I should know that. We're getting cracks in there that are inch and a half to two inches wide. You can feel them when you're taxiing over that. If we don't address it pretty soon, it's going to break up, it's going to become worse. So, what we're looking at doing is like what we did to the runway a couple of years, a complete mill. How far would we go down to them?
Two inches of the surface, and then in spots where the cracks are deep enough, we will take all the way down in those areas to fully rebuild those sections.
Yeah. So, we're looking at that before it becomes much worse. Once again, this has been cooling with CMT, our consultants, on this. Estimate value is $110,000, and local share would be $5,500. Okay? Number five, terminal area fencing improvements. That would only occur if we do number seven, which is airport parking lot resurfacing. The FAA will not fund for the automobile parking lot resurfacing. That's all local. That has to be done locally. I reached out to several asphalt contractors, we did get a response from one out of Marion, and they had an estimate to mill and re-asphalt the automobile parking lot is around $32,000. Once again, that would have to be done locally, local funds, no matching share from the state, no matching share from the FAA available for that. That's, you know, that can be another discussion we can have sometime in the future, or has it been discussed yet?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Kevin, last week when we met about the budget, they got the sheets that have the workout that shows what we're spending in those lines, and that's under actually lands and buildings.
Okay.
Building improvements are improvements in the general fund, and we actually put the airport parking lot in there.
Okay.
So, we'll probably talk about it again next week, but...
Okay. Well, if we proceed with that project, then number five would come into play. Pull out the old fence, put in a new fence. That is eligible for the federal funding and state funding. The engineering estimate on that, I think we revised that number. We have $41,000. That was taken in parallel to Isaac Beale Road.
Turn the corner and go along.
The up-to-date number we have is $14,000 total, which would be 90% federal, 5% state, 5% local. Okay, so... And then, the last item is number six, apron expansion. Several years ago, we lost part of our aircraft parking area because it's too close to the runway. You take the center line, go out 125 feet on either side, you have a area there where there's not allowed anything, then you go another 125 feet, and it's basically no parking and so forth. So, the FAA, eventually, they're going to make this, dig this asphalt out. Right now, we have to paint it and mark it off, so we lost some of our apron parking area. So, what we want to do, we have an area that's grass right now that takes up part of another apron area, and remove that grass area, fill it in with asphalt, and that would expand our apron. The problem we have right now, when we get a larger airplane in and they park in front of the terminal building, it's very tight for aircraft to get from the hangars, from the fuel farm, anything, out to the runway. It's very close, since we lost part of the apron by FAA mandate. So, that is what item number six is there. So, that's Airport Commission and myself, these are the items we talked about that we feel that needs to be addressed, and I'm just here to present it to you.
Okay, you and the Commission met, was a couple of weeks ago, like?
More like a couple of months ago.
Couple of months ago, okay.
Yeah, our president is Dave Shealy, and Dave's gone through a lot with family and so...
Okay. So, I mean, we do an appointment to that board, and I think the mayor appoints to that board, and so there are people in the, in the community that...
Present members are Dave Shealy, the accountant, Fred Fisher, Bud Logan, Kevin Locke, and Bobby Carr. Those are the present members, the bigger part of the commission.
Okay. So, then, we're looking to, for this $15,700 then to be in the budget for next year.
That's what we are requesting.
Okay? Is that what you have?
Well, plus the parking lot.
Plus the parking lot, yeah. Okay. So, we'll... That's what we're working on tonight is the budget.
Okay.
Okay?
Anything else? Any questions?
Any questions about the airport?
God, you're making it easy on me. That's good with me.
Everything's running well, I take it?
Well, yeah, we're going to take a nurse.
Traffic in and out.
Yeah, I mean, this time of year, you get the low clouds, you get the icing and so forth, and, you know, there's, there's a couple aircraft on the airport that are capable of handling those kind of conditions. Most of the single-engine, you know, smaller, they're, they're really not, so they have to stay grounded.
Yes, I ran into that all plenty. Fly nothing for me.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it was bad out there on the East Coast, yeah.
How many, how much traffic do we get? Over the year? How much, do you have a figure on how many planes come in and out?
Yeah, you know, I don't. I would say, if, if we had to average, when the flight school is active, the weather's good, and so forth, we'll get, and, and operation is considered a takeoff or a landing, we'll get 20 to 25 operations a day. The weather is bad, we may not see any.
Right. How many commercial do we have? Is it mostly commercial, or is it...
It's mostly private. Right now, there's 32 airplanes based there. Hoards have their corporate ship based there that I fly for them, and then Elkhorn Farms has several aircraft, and then we just had a company, two companies out of Marion go together and purchase an airplane, and they're basing it at our airport. So, it's, you know, primarily the smaller, single-engine type airplanes, but we do have the corporate activity too.
All right, thank you.
And actually, if you go onto the Support Busiris Crawford County Facebook page, you'll see an example of the latitude, I think it was, I came in for Articap here recently. He's parked out front, and you can see how much of the ramp area that he takes up, and it, you know, it's precarious for other aircraft to try to get around him. And that's why we're looking at item number six here, is expanding it.
Is this all?
Um, anybody, any questions for our consultants?
Any tough question?
Yeah, let me, yeah, I like to talk long.
Hey, Kevin, I, you know, and I know everybody's been on here a couple of years, but I will tell you, Kevin's out of sight, out of mind sometimes, and I just want to thank you for taking care of it out there and working with CMT, because it takes a, takes a little burden off of me, but I just appreciate him being out there and what he brings to the city. So, I, thank you.
I appreciate it, yeah. We don't want to step on any toes, we don't want to be in anybody's way, we just kind of try to keep things functioning.
Thank you.
But it does take money.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. Any other public participation?
I'm on.
All right. We will move on to order committee business. I will start economic development at 6:17 PM. We have Busiris Public Library appointments. I'll read this quick here. Addressing Busiris City Council, in front of the Busiris Public Library, Dear City Council Members, Busiris Public Library Board of Trustees, as three board members of the term will expire on December 31st, 2019. Two of these members, Donna Moore and Hannah Jacobs, would like to be reappointed to the board for a term of three years. We are submitting three applicants for the opening that will be filled for the term of January 1, 2020, through December 31st, 2022. The Busiris Public Library Board of Trustees would like to be Sir City Councils to approve Donna Moore and Hannah Jacobs and to appoint one of the following persons. Lisa Miller, Deputy Clerk, Crawford County Probate Court, 800 Rogers Street, Busiris, Ohio. Tricia Reiner, Charge Master and Credit Analyst for Omea, 1120 Marion Road, Busiris, Ohio. Kathleen M. Fisk, Instructor for Pioneer Career Technology Center, 716 Rogers Street, Busiris, Ohio. Thank you Stephanie, Hugh Cannon, Busiris Public Library Director.
Okay, six, two, six.
Any discussion?
I recommend Tricia.
Why is that?
Your sister-in-law or what?
No, I, I work for her husband and my...
Oh, your girlfriend?
I'm not saying the others are worth, worthwhile, but I don't, don't know.
I don't know how, yeah, I don't know how.
Lisa Miller is a primary reporter.
Yeah, I know, that's the only one I really know, so...
And Kathleen Fisk is Denny Tiner's daughter, used to be Service Safety Director.
Denny Nellis.
Denny Nellis, yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, do we get any recommendation from the library?
No recommendation from them, just...
There's three.
Pick one of those three. I get, do we have time? Could we ask them to provide us with some information on before we make our decision? I thought making that expression says no.
We need this by the first, yes.
Yeah, I spoke to her, if we could wait until next year, the next council, we can, but they will have to postpone, suspend their first meeting or not make any decisions in that first meeting.
So, we're going to look at that position, huh?
Okay. Well, I have one vote for Tricia. Monica?
I don't know any of them, so...
Yeah, like I say, all I know is Lisa. I know Lisa, I think she'd do a good job, but I don't want to get into it.
I think all three would do a good job. Yeah. I know of all three of them, so I don't think there's a problem there.
I will, my vote would be for Lisa. I've known of her for a great number of years, I went to school with her son. She seems to be very active in the community and involved, and does a lot of different volunteer things, so I guess that would be a reason for me to say her.
I already said who I was going to say, too, so...
Let me make a motion.
Well, I'll just ask your, why don't you ask your committee, if you're going to consider those two, they pick between the two then, and just ask them which one they would vote for, because we're going to have to go with that, so we get this moving through, okay?
Actually, I was going to say Lisa, was someone wondering?
All right, so I guess Monica, who's your vote for, Lisa or Tricia? Or Tricia?
I'll vote Lisa.
Lisa? All right. Well, that's three for Lisa and one for Mark, so Lisa Miller...
Well, I make the motion and we...
Motion by Mr. Wirebaugh for Lisa Miller. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes, we will recommend Lisa Miller.
Okay, this will come back to full council, don't you?
All right. Does anybody else have anything else? All right, I'll recess at 6:21 PM.
Health and safety, 6:21 PM. We have the liquor license request for Baker's Barbecue of Man, or Busiris LLC. I tried to reach out to them, but they couldn't get ahold of anybody. Does anybody else have any knowledge of why the request of a new one?
No.
So, I mean, I guess...
I mean, we don't have any objection to it. Where, where did he go? Where's our police officer?
I would just make a comment that we're not liquor enforcement, so if they're just asking for a new one, I would just say, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve...
You, we have a request for a liquor license, a new one out of Baker's Barbecue. I, you know, it may be to the patio that they need a separate license.
Yeah, that could be just...
That could be what it could be for. So, do you have any objection, you know of any objections to anything going on out there that would say no to this?
No. The chief ultimately has to sign off on it anyway.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
I heard no objections, and, you know, so...
All right. I have a motion to approve this. I have a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, aye. Motion will carry.
This too, it'll come back to full council.
That will come back to full council. Unless there's anything else to come for health and safety? Twenty-one, twenty-two? We'll adjourn at 6:22 PM.
Well, the Mayor's vote is, will be due at 6:22 PM. Memorial tree program. What we got on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman's come to full council, I think, a couple of times. We've been kind of working on this idea for a couple of years, and other towns have successfully done it. It allows people to memorialize deceased members of the community, or a relative, or not just that, but actually, you know, they don't have to be deceased, you know, it could be, you know, a brochure there, which we've, and plant a tree of a newborn child in the family, a teacher, a pastor, so on and so forth. The idea is to, you know, to plant a tree in their honor, and to watch it grow, and we would do that at our, typically at our city, three-city parks, where we have a lot of room for trees, but it would not be necessarily limited to that. It could be, it could be in tree lawns through, throughout town. It would be, there's a frequently asked questions page that you have in front of you, what's the cost of it? It's a minimal cost for a tree, and that would include planting. City would actually, we'd take care of the tree and do the pruning. We, we kind of modeled this after another city. I see that taken out of their bar button, yeah, so that's got to be changed, and it would be, Busiris would be put in there, as you see, I thought I got a reference. And, so, we tried to give some flexibility of what kind of a tree they wanted planted, all the way down to 100 dikes, you know, when we plan it. Typically, you know, the most risky time is in the first couple of years, make sure that we do get 100. We would not be, we would not be putting plaques out for obvious reasons, but we would be having a memorial book here at City Hall, that we keep up in the mayor's office, and so, and with a, with a, excuse me, a little note and a picture of the tree, what it was planted, who it was planted for, and who was doing the memorializing. And we have, we kind of done working on a little brochure that we would, that we would pass out with, it's something very easy to fill out. We've already got probably five or six people that are lined up to do this, and I suppose once the word gets out, it gets approved by council, it's probably going to be very popular here in town. Any questions?
This is not a money-making proposition, and it's not a money-costing operation.
No, won't cost anything, it won't make any money, and it's going to be the money. Probably, I'm not sure how the auditor would want this to work, whether we go in a separate line, you know, I figured that's probably the best way of the money, we get an deposit into that line, and then disperse from it. These plantings would be done typically in the fall, you know, from October till through December, and the trees go kind of dormant somewhat, and there's more moisture, and there's less risk of them dying. There's a possibility, we would do some plantings in, in April, but most of them would be done in the fall season.
Any questions?
Would, Mr. Chairman, could, could the memorial book be possibly put on the city website so people have access?
That would be no problem with that, yeah. A little picture, you could have even a Facebook page for it.
That is what I'm saying, you know, on our Facebook thing that I...
And that, the idea is to do something nice for the city, and at the same time, do something nice for, you know, either living in a deceased one of the community that, that, you know, that may live 30, 50, 100 years, or more, you know. There's some species of trees in town that are probably well over 100 years old. At the same time, you help the environment. We're all in favor of that.
So, any more questions? If not, I guess I end. Go ahead.
Are we going to limit the, or like, how are we going to figure out where they get to plant the tree, and what type of tree, and like, is that all...
Yeah, well, it's certainly going to be, there's flowering trees, they can pick flowering, and flowering trees will certainly be in a different area than what large shade trees are.
So, possibly depending on what tree you pick, will depend on where you can plant?
Right, we would give them the options and say, okay, these probably are going to do the best in this location here. Certain trees are more, are more hardy, that are better in heat zones. Bruce will tell you that, you know, there's, there's certain trees that need more sunshining, you know, so, yeah, we'll try to work with them as best we possibly can, as they, you know, recommend this area, how does that sound for you? It's all about, you know, making that tree special for those folks, you know. Secondarily, would be, it'd benefit the city parks as well as the environment, so, but this is mostly about memorializing, you know, that's it.
Just to follow up with what the mayor's saying, they actually have a plan that's, where, you actually have a plan that you're working on, where, what kind of trees are going in, what parts of the city, because you don't want all one type of tree, otherwise if you, like, when we had that problem recently with ash, you know, so they want to have a variety of trees, but then they also have a plan of where they're going to put the trees, so...
Yeah, the Tree Board has, has worked on that plan, and there's several, we have, there's work to do yet on that, but you're exactly right, you know, we don't want to plant, if, if, we're heavy into a couple types of trees in this community, calorie pears, which have now been banned for various reasons, as well as a lot of maples, especially silver maples, which, you know, are susceptible to disease, and so, we are trying to plant a variety of trees in case, like, rain... So, we are trying to plant a variety of trees in case, like right now there's a Asian longhorn beetle that's, you know, attacking a lot of different varieties. So, and we had just like the ashbore, so we're trying to keep that in mind. So, if you get something like that. I know when I was younger, we had what was called a maple scale, cottony maple scale, you remember that one? Yeah, which didn't actually kill the trees, it actually, we had, they had all had to be treated. All the maples had to be treated. Probably do for outbreak of that over these years too.
Just a comment on, you know, this particular plan. I think, you know, having that, you know, where, where certain types of trees and kind of where your, the plan is, that'd be great for the city to have, to be able to make sure there's kind of a transition and whoever's, you know, future administrations don't have to do, know, be as knowledgeable on all this and kind of knows.
Bruce will tell you that, say, you know, that's one thing that, I don't know, were you there for the interview with Stephanie Miller? I'm not sure you were, but, you know, the overall plan for the city is really critical just for the reasons you brought up. You know, just for continuity for, for future administrations as well as for future members of the Tree Board. It's complicated. It's not easy. There's a lot of work that these folks put into this. It's, it's a matter of not just plantings, but, you know, maintenance too. Prunings and, you know, the next year, just since you brought that up, a lot of our work will be done on removal of diseased trees. And we have some issues around town of those, dangerous trees. And so we're not going to be doing a lot of planting next year with our budget.
Anything else?
I guess I would go ahead and make a motion and we proceed with the memorial tree program.
Okay.
Second.
Motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Move ahead to Thatch. So, are we going to need legislation for that then?
Aye.
Rob?
What about all the other?
Yeah, because you're going to, well, she's going to create a new budget, so.
She's going to create a new budget.
And then we'll pass the budget that makes that, do we need anything else too?
One thing to add.
Madam President, I'll ask Joyce the same question. Could that be put in the, the tree maintenance budget? I mean, is it possible for it to be put in there? Is that one we have already been existing?
It probably could, but if you want to track it.
Okay. Just, okay, just trying to make it simple.
Right. Anything else other than maybe the full council to approve it?
Yeah, other than that, this is what the miners should create and have you approve as part of the full budget. So, I don't know if we need anything else.
Okay, we're just need approval from the full council. Okay. Got it? All in favor?
Yeah, we're good. We're good.
Alright, so 6:33 PM we will.
Okay, I'll call the finding order at 6:33 PM. First thing, please, from random, on the DM.
Thank you, ma'am. The, our current contract with Front Ward Police is entering its final year in 2020. The prior contract, well, this contract had a wage reopener for the third year of the contract. So, we met with the FOP. We have negotiated a 2.25% wage increase for the third year of the contract. It matches the same wage increase that was in there in 2012 and 2019. So, that's what the tentative agreement is. Did FOP already vote?
Yes.
FOP has already voted to accept that and approve that. So, now it's your turn.
Do we have to do legislation for this or is it just simply?
An approval of that.
An approval of that and then it would come committee and then it would go to full council to approve. Okay.
Questions?
So, you're seeking an approval of the memorandum of understanding? Make a motion.
A second.
First by Dan, second by Dana. All in favor?
Aye.
I said aye.
Okay, motion passed. Okay, 2020 budget. Joyce?
I believe you all got copies.
Oh, there's a look, there's a look up there.
There is a look right in front of you. You have, if you brought your paperwork with you from the last committee meeting we had, you'll find, if you look through here, that these items that were highlighted in the last discussion are now also highlighted in here. This is just the expense budget worksheet that you've got right now. It is not the income portion of that. The income portion, we will be getting to you as soon as is available. Okay?
Don't even ask.
So, I don't know, were there any possible ones that you wanted to highlight and talk about?
Well, I was, you covered part of it already and I know last week we met and you got some downside sheets of the major expenses that we're looking for this next year or projects or equipment. We did go through those expense sheets that Joyce printed out and highlighted those. There is one that is circled. I'm still working on it. I have to get to Joyce. They was in the engineering and one of the funds. I did add, to the airport, I added Kevin Betraya mower. He had been leasing a mower from JD Equipment down in Marion and they got bought out corporately a couple of years ago or last year, so the, wasn't so good on the lease price, but, so he had to return it. So, we're looking to go out to Burkhardt's tomorrow to see what they might have. And I had him on the phone and I did put nine thousand in there for a sixty inch deck that it's a commercial mower and isn't a lawn mower you buy for your house. So, I did add that into the budget. And since we're still working, Joyce is still working with some software issues on the fund side. When we get that put in, then we might have to go back through and look at some of the expenses depending where that puts us. So, if you have anything you want to bring up now and talk about, that's fine. But I think we were trying to look at a date next week that we can get together. This will give you time to redo it, go through it. It's got every line item in there from the expense side. So, we were just hoping that Joyce gets her issues worked out with the new software. We should have the funds side queue next week. That's totally whatever you guys want to do tonight. You guys have something you want to bring up, we can talk about it or, you know, we can wait until next week.
A question here, the layout of this report that you have in front of you. We've got the 2018 budget and the 2018 actual. Then it's the 2019 budget and this is 29 actual budget or actual to date.
To date.
To date, as of today.
Yes.
Okay, so that's as of 2025, okay? And the next column is?
Next column is the proposed 2020.
No, there's one that says 2019 E and C now.
Oh, that is outstanding purchase orders.
Okay.
They're still, don't notice there's some numbers in there. Purchase orders that are still open.
Okay, and then the final column is the, the next column then is the 2020 budget that's being proposed.
I just have a question for Joyce. Is it possible to get a percentage printout, percentage wise to, you know, 2019 budget versus actual percentage over?
That's what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a.
Wouldn't it be cheaper just to buy one of those little eight dollar calculators?
Yeah. Go for it. Old program did do that.
Yeah.
This one doesn't automatically do that.
Okay.
There may be a report that I can run that will show that. But I have nothing to all those programs, you know, I'm still trying to get them, make things work.
If we can get one of those, we'll get it on to you.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be helpful for when we revisit this.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, in there, I think you're, what, you're going to see a slight increase wherever you have insurance hospitalization is up. What was the percent on that, ma'am?
I'm sorry.
So, that's almost, 6.95.
6.95% is an increase in hospitalization.
Be thankful, that's all.
Be thankful, yeah.
I think it could be.
But, yeah. The workers comp and all that is basically up just a little. Not much, it doesn't look like. And, um, remember with, as far as the safety forces are concerned, safety forces are paid out of the general fund and out of the safety forces levy. So, it takes a combination of both of those items in order to come up with the final number. Okay?
And we do have a payment in there for the fire truck that couldn't have, couldn't have changed the amount. I think we put ninety-five thousand in there. You know, if we can't do that, we can only back down to fifty or whatever payment plan we decide to work out when we do that payment plan, so.
Okay.
What kind of lamps and buildings improvements, what are you guys going to be doing through 2025?
What page are you on? Bruce?
V, V, 3.5.
No, it's in the middle. Oh, it's in the middle. Middle of the day.
Oh, 22 is seventy-four.
Twenty-two?
Yeah.
You're on your lamps and buildings, where? 52558?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've got some building repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. The fire department broke the airport parking lot. We wanted to start to take care of the metal trash containers of downtown. We needed one to recote those before they get too bad. And we want to put some new lights up at the square. And we got in here to power wash the engine building and make sure that it doesn't get behind, re-plant it up, reseal it.
Is there any proof, I'm sorry. Is there any provision for us to take care of our parking lots?
I.
I mean, you know, we're.
You know, we talked about that too. I guess that would kind of try to steer towards Rob a little bit, but I think when we did City Hall, we could take care of the dry part that all the city uses, the residents on the building pay, but we couldn't do the parking spots. So, that's probably about what we could do to tackle the parking lots. If we, we'd look at, we could look at that and we could put a, if the fund could afford it, we could try to put something in to do one or two this year, this next year, or do all of them. But I don't think we have that kind of money.
We're going to have to lightbulb one of these stairs.
Yeah, no, you're right.
That new gas tax money cannot be used for that, can it?
Just the, the middle portion.
Just the middle portion.
And you can keep in mind, why, why were we able to do that? The legal, you know, and why were we able to do that with portions of City Hall parking lot is because, is a thoroughfare. It's the access for the water and it's the cut through for the other alley and a couple of other things. Most of our parking lots don't have that same functionality. They are just in and outs, so no portion of that is even.
One of the nine crazy foxes, you can say that that would be a thoroughfare.
It'd be difficult. There's no, there's no reason, I mean, it's not set up to, to be that way. In fact, you can get from one alley or one street to an alley that's, you know.
What's behaved as a street?
Yeah, yeah, so, but that was, that's in the city hall.
Wirefaring way.
I'd just like to see us do something, whether it be, you know, crack sealing or something. At least we did something.
What about like, like the picking parking lot? Because of the fact that the, the pass through there and then with the, the pass through by the picking kettle right there to Springfield, not Springfield, but Walton.
That's not a big private alley.
That's a.
That's a private.
Yeah, that's not.
The portions, the portions that are alleys clearly that covers, but the portions that are.
Well, that's all on alley right there, isn't it?
It's all in the alley, but it's not.
But it's not the alley.
I will, I will try to get with, I already hear you from what we're coming to working with to do the building payment. I'll try to get a ballpark price. What it would cost, whether it's part of the street fund or as my hall or the general fund. So, I'll try, I can try to have that next week. I can try to have a ballpark.
I mean, that, that has a real effect even on, on the area itself, I believe.
Yeah, we're looking to present a business area and we're looking to say, you know, we take care of everything. So, I mean, that town looks great.
I think lot six is that we're going to be putting a charging station in there. That, that is really rough shape because of, you know.
Does it become a thoroughfare and now you got the charging station there?
No.
It's, it's, it keeps sinking because there's a hotel under there. So, the first down, the Albertson Hotel is in it. But that's a rough, rough shape. I know we keep patching it, it keeps sinking. Be interesting, we should probably reach out to Aaron's. Paving, we might even use some paving.
Probably be more advantageous to try to pave it first rather than the.
That's where I'm at. Yes, yeah, so. Exactly.
I guess this work, you know, as you look through these, and if you have questions, please do not wait until next week when we set up a meeting. Give them a call, you know, write it down, give it to them so that they can get the answer back to you and then we'll share those with everybody so that, oh, we can, back here we have answers, not just questions.
Again, I got another one. Where are we at with air conditioning heating and all this good stuff here?
Are we? I think we're down to the last finer. I can't give you the exact details, but it's down to the last fifteen thousand dollars that it's all done. And all the thermostat to work and, so I think there's some minor things we put in the budget for next year that then should finish it up.
No rough problems?
Fire?
No rough problems?
Well, we, we had one in June. And I've called the company about eight times, but we've never had nothing since. So, I think it was just the fact that it was so much water. I think it actually came over the drainpipe. You know what I mean? It couldn't take it off and it seeped in that mess bathroom over there. So, but other than that, we haven't had any issues.
Right, see, we've got, what about the street traffic light, new equipment? Is that a debt for where? A couple of those intersections?
I think that was on.
It was twenty-nine?
Well, I'll look at my other sheet this. Oh, we were going to put up new lights at Hopley, East and Lucas and Maslow and.
Okay, yeah.
And Maslow and Westone. I do believe instead of the cables, we'll actually put the new poles in and put arms out so we don't get them sagging from an insurance standpoint, but the lights get hit. Yeah, so we were going to try to do a couple each year where we have that issue.
So, this, this money that we will be receiving, um, part of this hundred thousand, can that money be used for the crosswalks? Like in front of courthouse to the crosswalk on Lane Street, by the soccer field.
Gas tax money?
Right, yeah.
Gas tax money?
I don't think that could be used for that either. I think, I think that's, that's, it's all, it's just like the mini, it could be used for, I think it's for curves and streets. We might be able to mark the crosswalks, but I'm not sure we can buy, I can check into that. I'm not sure we can buy the lights that we're talking about. So, yeah, we, the ones we want to put in down by soccer fields and by courthouse.
They last longer than three days.
Yeah, no surprise.
So, do we have a time that we're going to meet again?
Oh, yeah, we were considering Wednesday evening, next Wednesday. Or does that fit into everybody's schedule?
What, what time were we considering?
Anytime between seven A.M. and midnight.
Eleven fifty-five.
Only you would say that. We'd do it, at five o'clock.
How about meeting at seven, we could do five, I would, you know?
I'm supposed to be somewhere at seven.
How about three thirty?
That pushes Bruce. How about four?
How about four?
Four o'clock?
Four.
Four o'clock on the eleventh, okay? Sir, can you, Bruce?
Yeah, yeah, I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, I, I sound like a broken record, but I got a question. I, I really do feel strongly, now we're gonna have a brand new Burger King. And, you know, there's gonna be a lot of kids that are going to want to ride their bicycles and walk and however you get to Burger King. Is there any way you can at least provide me some type of better walking path, at least from Wayne Avenue to Burger King? Currently, there is nothing.
I mean, it's, it's,
Which one, which one's first?
Can you just put something in the budget for that?
The first one?
Yeah. I mean, the first time a kid gets good.
Well, there's no, I'm sorry. What? I was just gonna add, there's no walking path to McDonald's either, so that matter, I mean, if you're,
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking right now about Burger King.
I understand.
And I, I've been complaining and complaining and complaining.
But I agree with him.
I'm just bringing up, I'm just bringing up another, going up, I go out to McDonald's or something coming in, they're walking there, no, there is no walking on Marion Road. Once you get past, uh, I believe, um, the second street has,
Allen and Allen each other?
Allen, passing Allen, you know, there's no sidewalks.
Allen.
All right, well, you either pick a priority, either you do Marion Road or you do Mansville.
Right, I didn't bring it up to make, you know, and the guy that we need to,
Just grab your seat, I'm here to do priority.
I mean, there's gotta be a priority, we gotta do something.
I will look into that, Bruce. I will look for Wayne to Burger King, what you're looking for. Well, I, I suppose while you're doing it, is there a way to, and I don't know if we have engineering to look at it, give us a cost estimate for both? Just so that we know going forward, if there's the opportunity and the money presents itself, you know, we're looking at, would be bad just to have an answer.
And like Marion Road be on one, just one side right now?
Right, we can't afford to do both sides.
At least one side.
Yeah.
No, we don't.
I think honestly, for that matter too, you make a good point, Mark. One side for the Mansville Street as well, you don't need it on both sides, I mean, I think,
It started, something started.
Yeah, but where Bruce is talking is a great start on Mansville.
Right, that's a great start, especially that side because they proceed on the Walmart.
Well, and what made me think of that was, is, you know, you said about Marion Road, the, to me, the east side of Marion Road would be the better side because there's less parking lots and, and in a sense, traffic turning into parking lots.
And Bruce brings up a good point, both those restaurants deploy a lot of kids.
Yeah.
And attract a lot of kids, so.
Let alone the pine, uh, what is the?
It's pine wood.
Pine wood, you know, park, parks there, let alone the, uh, low income, the assisted housing for the senior citizens out there and,
It's back in the home, yeah.
And, and on both sides of Marion Road.
I walked those birds all the time when I was a kid. My grandmother walked me out to Ames every day to babysit. On Marion Road.
It's a problem.
Or home, sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, then, anything else?
A lot of work.
Yeah, there's a lot of things to go down and go through.
Four o'clock on the eleven, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and like I said, please, questions? We, I'll prompt with the questions so that we can have answers.
I've got another topic when we're done with this, I don't know if we are done yet or if you got some else related.
I, I had another question. Is, is there any way that we can, uh, update our, uh, our, uh, camera system? I mean, well, I don't understand why we don't have live coverage anymore. I mean, it's kinda like after the fact, you know, you're recording, you, you know, I don't know, it's just,
Yeah, I, I went to look, sorry, I went to look for something the other day, I think it was June or July was the last one on the, on the, um, YouTube page or, however you wanna say that.
I mean, we're paying a person to do the job, you know, let's, I mean, we're not, you know, there's modern technology out there, isn't there? Something that we can do, you know, instead of recording it and playing it, you know, different times that,
I think Time Warner, you know, originally, which is, we set up the access channel and everything with, with this, uh, of course, they've been bought out by Spectrum. And, uh, the, uh, any kind of, anytime that we've approached Spectrum, uh,
Yeah, but we gotta ace with the hole downstairs in that corner office.
Yeah, well, okay, let me finish, please. Then, uh, the, uh, uh, we've, we've been relying on a resident here that works for one of those companies that has been most helpful in getting the equipment that we need to do it, but it just now, we're to the point where it all needs to be replaced. And so, Erie Hesse and I had a conversation, uh, several months ago and, uh, talking about he is supposed to be working on getting us, uh, quotes for, to replace all the equipment and get it so that it is all up to date and it is all tech savvy stuff that, that works with everything that's out there now. And then, uh, the, uh, he and I were talking about approaching the Shum Foundation and a couple of foundations here in the, in the county to see if we could get, uh, them a, a grant for it. So, that was something that, that's been started, so, just so they know that that's a big one, one.
You know, I was just wanting, maybe a mayor or researcher could, you know, bring it to the forefront with maybe Jim Jordan and Spectrum. You know, why is it that they stuck us way up in the upper channels? I mean, the average Joe, you know, maybe it doesn't, or can't afford those upper channels. And always in the past, you always could have, you know, your basic two through twenty-three. I mean, somebody as powerful and influential as he is, you would think that by chance, maybe someone would set up and they'd notice.
Right now, he's got his hands full there.
Oh, yeah.
We, we, um, we just, I had to do some research a couple of weeks ago on a piece of equipment that we could actually do it YouTube Live. So, he has ordered that piece of equipment to be able to do that. So we will be live whenever that comes in, he gets back to work. Um, actually, Rob brought it up and Gary went out and found the units we needed to be able to do that. So it will at least be YouTube Live, uh, hopefully here soon.
And then it can be, then it, can we can put a link over on our webpage, our website to go to that, right?
Well, then he'll be looking at the equipment we need to get it back up on Spectrum because it's been nothing but problems.
So is there money in the budget for that?
I, I think a piece of equipment he needed, I, the original one he found was about eight hundred dollars. And this one he found for seven hundred, six ninety-five or something, so I took him, go ahead and order it, so.
Okay, with Chris down?
Mike, no?
I'd like to bring up another topic. Um, the hot topic of the last couple of weeks has been, you know, service director residency. It's still in committee. You know, we've heard from people that came and spoke, uh, against it here in council chambers, uh, emails and phone calls have been, you know, I don't wanna say fifty-fifty, I don't know, but it's been both, I've heard both sides. Both sides have compelling arguments that I can't see the one was right or wrong. Uh, but I wanna revisit it and say, you know, a lot of people thought their twenty miles was too extensive and I've had several people suggest to be two different things I've heard, and I just wanna bring them up and see if there's any, any thoughts of, of, if you're rewording it. Uh, so one of those was a, a five mile radius, which is currently three, allowing them to extend to five. Uh, the other one that I heard was, uh, at Bucyrus, Ohio mailing address. And I don't know exactly where that ends, I haven't had the time to look at it. But if someone can see it, if there was any thought to revisit it, man.
I, I would give you my opinion on it, I mean, I'm not gonna be here next year. But personally, I don't see why it is a big deal. The police chief has twenty miles, the fire chief has twenty miles. He's gonna do the same good job he does in Sulphur or on Bucyr, or in Bucyrus. It doesn't matter.
I agree with you.
I don't see what the big deal is, I really don't.
Well, but I think if, if what we're looking for here is, is to come to some kind of an agreement in that if, uh, uh, both, uh, groups could come together and say, hey, you know, add two miles to it, make it five miles from, it's already three, gonna be extended to five.
Um, I'll have to admit, I was part of that original conversation when, uh, Jeff Campbell and Glenn Ockerman, they actually came to us. Uh, Jeff Campbell came and spoke to each one of us on council, so did Glenn Ockerman. And, uh, they sat down with us and said, well, you know, um, we aren't asking for anything more than just the idea that we wanna be able to, he wants to be able to have Jeff, you know, be a service director. And, uh, we're not asking for an exorbitant mileage. We want the mileage to reflect where Jeff lives in relationship to the city. And that's how we came up with the three miles. As far as I'm concerned, measure the distance between Bucyrus and, and Sulphur Springs. The statement before was, you know, when I got on council, uh, Johnny Miller was, uh, very influential with me, as well as Carl Billy. And they were both on opposite sides of the spectrum, but they both would put their heads together and talk and, and, uh, said, you know, it's easier to open the door a couple of times than it is to open the door wide open and, uh, get something you don't want. So, I mean, if you're saying that there's a, I don't know, a, a vacuum, uh, intelligence vacuum, at a later date, a different person, you know, that can always come back to the city council and say, hey, you know, I can't find any qualified candidate, uh, please review.
Um, to your point, um, and, and we'll talk about the elephant room, you know, if, if I may speak frankly, Mr. Wagner, as everybody knows, purchased a property in Sulphur Springs, um, and that particular property from the city limits is four point five seven miles. I mean, and that's what, what we're talking about right now. You know, I agree with you, I said, you know, there's places you could live in the city limits right now that are gonna take you just as much time. And I think, you know, we're talking about twenty nineteen, um, your ability to do your job is, is not really gonna be hampered by a three minute drive. And, you know, like I said, both sides have compelling arguments, I'm not trying to say any one side was, was right or wrong. I'm just saying that, let's talk about it, you know, with the facts that we have at hand now. We're already allowed three miles. We were asked to extend that further, there was opposition to accomplish the, the reason the question was brought up. I know, I have talked to several people, even some of the people that have spoken opposition to it, um, are okay with the five mile radius. They weren't okay with the twenty mile. I don't know if we wanna consider putting that back forth.
Um, as the law director, we're sitting here at the first reading of that piece of legislation.
Yeah, you can make changes to, for the second reading, you can make, that's not quite over to three.
Okay.
You can make changes to, for, have your second reading reflect those, those changes. You would make a motion here to, to change it, to present it for the second reading of the five mile. We would just edit that piece of legislation for consideration for the next meeting.
I would like to move, uh, to, to change that legislation request from twenty to five and see where that goes.
I, you're making,
That is a motion, yes.
So I have a first by Kevin, do I have a second?
I'm gonna, I just wanna,
What, what committee is that in?
Finance.
Finance. Sorry.
It's in finance.
I just wanna continue the discussion a little bit before we, before we go on with that motion. I, I was one that thought the Bucyrus, Ohio mailing address was not a bad idea. Um, and, and Sulphur Springs is in abuse, is a Bucyrus, Ohio mailing address. Okay, so, um, am I incorrect there?
I, I, no, it's in there. I, I got the map.
The four-four-eight-two-o zip code, right, it's pretty expensive. Yeah, okay, so the four-four-eight-two-o zip code, okay.
Well, that's what this map says.
Okay.
Well, I know when I grew up there, it was four-four-eight-eight-one, which one is where now?
There's two.
Oh, yeah, now the new one's there.
Uh, uh, maybe I'm wrong, I don't know.
No, no, you, you wouldn't, I, I, I haven't lived there for thirty-five years, so.
My understanding was that Sulphur was a Bucyrus, Ohio mailing address.
According to this map.
That's, that's kinda where I,
I think you're correct, that's the way I perceive it.
Am I off base somehow? I mean, I'm getting some, uh, some looks, I guess. I guess my, my thought process was, um, people who have a, who have a residence that's in, that has a Bucyrus mailing address, identify themselves as being from Bucyrus. And I thought, you know, five miles is, three miles is arbitrary, five miles is arbitrary. But if your address has Bucyrus, Ohio on it, I think most people that have Bucyrus, Ohio as their address, identify themselves as being from Bucyrus. And that's kinda to me, uh, a way to kinda put an identity on, you know, a person, you know. I, I, I agree with you completely. I don't think, you know, the, the position's appointed by the mayor, and I think the mayor's gotta make a good decision as to who their choice is, that they're gonna be a good, a good person for that opportunity and, and fill the role and do it well. Um, I think you could expand it beyond five miles and, and still have a Bucyrus address. So I guess I, I'm just trying to find a way to kinda create an identity for that definition rather than just going with a random number on mileage out of town. Because, I mean, we should be talking about six miles, seven miles, so it's just,
Right.
depending on the individual, it's a little, I don't, I don't know how you,
But are we, are we sure that that covers that?
Well, I think that'd be something to clarify before we make a motion about.
No, sir, the, the only, the only qualifier I would mention with that, um, and is, is Mr. Doc D., um, three miles, five miles, hundred miles, those are definitive.
Yeah.
Area codes or zip codes, uh, are admin of another agency, and Steve just indicated Sulphur, but it'd be used in four-four-eight-eight-one. And so, you know, you may have some, you may have that four-four-eight-two-o for Bucyrus mailing address and post office changing tomorrow. Much like they do with their crisis stamps. So, so they would take, they would change things that you would want changed. They can expand, I mean, four-four-eight-two-o can.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my only thought with the five miles is that there's, there's a lot of people who I, who consider themselves from Bucyrus that live outside of five miles. And that, that's kinda what I didn't wanna eliminate them from consideration. But if we're gonna go five miles rather than four-four-eight-two-o or Bucyrus, Ohio mailing, to me, it makes sense to be, you know, expanding. I don't think, I, I don't, I don't consider, I don't think we should be looking to build this wall around the city limits and make that our, uh, our definition of who is, who is loyal to Bucyrus and who isn't. And, and anyone who works, uh, for the city of Bucyrus, their city taxes are gonna go to the city. And most likely, if they live, well, if they live within that five mile radius, their kids are, their property taxes are gonna go to the county. They're gonna be supporting one of the local school districts, you know, Crawford, Winford, Bucyrus, so. I'm done.
Kim, did you have something?
Why, was it, Jeff, is your house in Sulphur or is it like in the country by Sulphur?
No, it's, it's in Sulphur.
Okay, 'cause I did a thing and, 'cause I, you know, I go to New Washington, I want, and I feel like Sulphur is further than, what'd you say, four point seven?
According to GIS, uh, from the city limit line up there on the corner or crossroads is, is four point five seven-nine.
You did from the line, I just did Bucyrus, Sulphur, it says ten minutes, which is about right, driving time.
I'm where you're coming from.
Six point nine, so I was just thinking, Six point nine. So I was just thinking, well, you should go a little more than five just to make sure if you're going to go miles. But I kind of like, what?
The way O R C defines those radiuses for habitation purposes is as the crow flies from any point in the city limits. So five miles within the city limits of Bucyrus would be a jagged line, you know, based on where you started from. Yes, that's, that's in other portions of the O R C that talk about habitation and.
Okay.
Distances and stuff like that, so.
So they base it on that?
Yeah, it's not a pure circle, you know.
A pure circle.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
Or, you know.
There's a motion on the floor?
Some motion within five miles. Do I have a second for five miles or three?
Second.
First by Kevin, second by Andy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm gonna, I vote, I'm in favor of it, so. Motion passed.
I may ask the clerk just to care, legislation request for the amendment.
Yeah, I'm going to report our council then on the seventeenth as the second reading.
Yes.
Anything else for finance?
No.
Okay, so I will reset at seven eleven P.M. Onto number four, public participation. Do we have any? None? I have a motion to adjourn the joint regular committee. First by Dan, second by Bruce at seven twelve P.M.
I'm trying to have the. Wait a minute, but there is still a recording going on. That needs to be shut off. Where is he? We don't touch his equipment.
He asked me to.
Did he? Okay, yeah.
Said when the meeting was, yeah, meeting was adjourned, adjourned.
As long as you have permission, yes.